Called meeting. Did you all take a look at the minutes and is, are they correct? We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made the motion.
I'll second.
And Ms. Glover's second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The second minutes are June the 4th of 24, and that was our last regular meeting. I hope you had a chance to look at those, were there any deletions, corrections? Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Ms. Addington made the motion. Have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Manis' second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Citizens' expression. I have a statement here I need to read prior to citizens' expression. Citizens' expression period is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. And citizens' expression is open.
Good morning. Peggy Tice, Snowflake Road. I guess you all know, I'm like a broken record. Dirt roads in Scott County, anyone that lives or drives on a dirt road in Scott County, we all have complaints to VDOT. We don't want to leave VDOT out. And we're glad that taxes wasn't raised, we're so thankful for that. And people always mention to me about Riverside properties. We need to get something in there to bring in revenue for Scott County. And another thing, we need to stay with Terry Kilgore, keep on Terry Kilgore, for trying to get us more money allotted for dirt roads. And not only Snowflake Road, but all dirt roads in Scott County. And I guess keep us on that six-year plan, which nobody's happy with that six-year plan. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Gary Baker from Boosie Creek. I'm here today on behalf of Rowan and Sue Wright. They wanted me to come and they live on Moore Chapel Road, and they wanting to, for me to personally thank Michelle and Eddie for getting a public service authority to fix their water line that has been exposed for several years and freezes almost every year, but last time it froze on Christmas. And they really appreciate Michelle and you and Eddie. And on behalf of myself and other county residents, I'd like to thank you all for not raising our taxes. We really appreciate it. And how to give you time enough to micro-manage everything in the county, ever, ever department there is, even the two beds. So, anyway, Mike, appreciate your time. Y'all have a good.
You.
Thank you.
Amen.
Anyone else this morning? We'll close public expression and go on to our first three public hearings this morning. The first public hearing is possible with option of an ordinance to amend the transient occupancy tax ordinance at section two, levying rate to amend the rate from 2% to 5%, designating the excess 3% solely for tourism as specified in Virginia Code, section 58.1-3819A2. And we'll open public expression for the adoption of this or for any, any public expression on this subject. Okay. We'll close public expression, the public hearing, and ask our board, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Manis makes a motion to adopt. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this passes. The second public hearing is possible adoption of an amendment to Scott County Solid Waste Control Ordinance. Article five to add a new section, section three, reduce tipping fee to allow Scott County sole proprietors collecting back household waste to pay a reduced tipping fee of $40 at the Scott County Transfer Station. And we'll open this for public expression. Anyone want to speak on this subject? Okay, we'll close that and ask for a motion for the possible, for the adoption of this.
I'll make the motion for that adoption.
Mr. Schem made the motion, we have a second. Okay, Mr. Castile's second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this amendment passes. Next is the possible approval of a special use permit submitted by Albert W. Graybill for tax map 149-1-6-8 on Crystal Highway. And we'll open the public expression.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Mr. Graybill came into my office a couple of months ago and was wanting to put a mini storage in the old mobile home park, right before you get into Hiltons on the right. He put in the application, paid his fees, there is the location on the map where it would be. He has a lot, it's almost directly opposite the church on the Hilton Highway. There's the lot. It is agriculture residential, so it does require a special use permit. If you get down, and there is the, out of the ordinance, calling for a special use permit for mini storage units. There is special regulations involved with the mini storage, he has to meet certain guidelines, and they're spelled out in the zoning ordinance. And there's a definition for a mini warehouse. It's pretty straightforward. There is the adjacent joining property owners, they all have been sent letters, certified letters, making them appointed with the dates for the planning commission and for the board supervisors. The one, there is a picture of the location that we're talking about. Mr. Graybill has done quite a bit of cleanup work, I don't know where you remember that site, but it's been a isoler for 10, 12, 15 years. And he's done a lot of renovation, getting rid of some mobile homes, he redid the bridge. The one holdup right now, and the special use permit can, it would be a conditional one to get a VDOT commercial entrance permit. Well, the problem with VDOT is they have changed their system or whatever, and now they, I've talked to the gentleman in VDOT, he, I can't get him on the phone, he sends emails to Freedom, but he responded to me one time, and his question was about, and I told him that would probably be more traffic in a mobile home park than it would have, but I haven't heard anything. So, this permit, it is a special use permit, but should be conditional on the VDOT okay of a commercial entrance. He gave us a plan. Mr. Graybill is probably 94, 95-year-old, gets around like a teenager, so he's pretty active. I talked to him, and he said it shouldn't be no problem. You got any questions?
Did any of the package?
Did any of the landowners, the Jason owners complain or anything?
Nobody has said anything, because it's really a cleanup of the situation. I don't know where you've been up to there, it's a long time, but it really looked bad. There was mobile homes in pieces, everything, and the old car wash, I don't think it's been operational for
For years.
10, 15 years. So he plans to clear all that out, and his first plan was to build a mini storage on this side of the small branch that runs down through there. Then he said later on, he's gonna branch out and then do one on the other side, that's the reason he reworked the bridge. The bridge really looks good, he really did a good job on it. You see it every day, so. You all have a package in front of you? You got any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else want to speak on this topic? If not, we'll, we'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion to possibly approve this conditional on the VDOT entrance being approved.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Glover made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Castile's second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next on the agenda is C Court, we have some gentlemen here to speak to us on C Court.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of C Court, Russell County. I came a little over a month ago, and kinda done a small presentation, was asked to come back, so just wanna open up for questions, or whatever y'all want, whatever you need from us.
Anyone have any questions?
Has Russell County committed any funding for your project?
They have.
How much should they commit?
A hundred thousand.
Wise County has also, I don't know how much.
They have.
You, you mentioned before, 75,000 possibly for months.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And that's from the opioid money?
Yes. Yeah, the direct money.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the facility, and how it's gonna affect the community that it
Yeah, so, you know, the facility, we've been working on this project now for a little over a year, and we, we purchased the building back in the winter, started working on it. In the meantime, you know, we've had to work on, of course, business plans, we've had to work on all the construction, things of that nature, and working on the bid with the DOC. So, we were awarded the bid back in February this year. So we have a, we have a contract to DOC to house at least 50 residents every month. It's a 90-day program that, where they're gonna come, and it's, it's all opioid-based with counseling, drug addiction counseling, you know, we've got educational things that we've got to do with them, try to get them to a point where they can go home and function as productive citizens.
Are these people gonna be just a part of the community, or are they gonna be allowed off of the facility?
Yes.
How does that work?
So these folks, they're gonna come to us, so we've got, in 90 days, we have to find them employment, have a home plan, have a vehicle plan, start paying on their court fines, right? We're gonna get folks right out of prison, we're gonna get them a lock from the regional jail, okay? And these people, after the 90 days, they are going back home, yeah. And a lot of them will continue to work at the jobs that we even find for them.
So it's really taking people, showing them how to be productive citizens, good, good people.
Right. And, yeah, that's right, they make some bad choices.
Help them create a stubborn lifestyle.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Cause it, I mean, it is such trouble, I mean, it is such a problem, everybody knows all about this problem with the drug addictions and the opioid addictions and things, and it's, it's real, we've got to have programs like this. And until we, until we was awarded the contract, there wasn't a, the closest program was running. And from there, I think there was one in Richmond, so we didn't have one down on this end after it was closed.
And arguably, this area's been hit worse than, than rural Richmond.
Yeah.
The last time you were here, I believe you mentioned, and I talked to Mr. Smith a while ago, about how it would affect our jail, our regional jail. You've got some figures on that, don't you?
Yeah, so, we're gonna, y'all are paying X amount for the house these folks to be at this regional jail. So if it's ordered through the court, to come to C Court to finish out their term, then the DOC's gonna pay for that. Thus, taking some of that burden off of Scott County, off the taxpayers of Scott County. And just on averaging five, five residents from Scott County, comes out to be about $91,000 a year off of $50. I don't know exactly how much y'all were paying, I think East County pays us a little bit different, but, you know, in five years, that's almost a half a million dollars that we can possibly save.
And that's only five?
That's just five.
That's pretty good, it could be more than that, possibly could.
Yeah.
So do you think three months? I just, I just think three months is not a long enough.
It's, it's quick.
That's what the standard, I guess I don't, I guess I don't know what's
That, that is the standard, 90 days, yeah. It used to be longer, but I think they've condensed it down to 90 days.
Do they have a lot of repeat?
From time to time, you know, a lot of these folks are gonna be, the judge is gonna know them, probation is gonna know them, they're ready to start doing better, right? So, as far as repeats, now, I've, I've employed folks from here for 10 years now, and I have never had a repeat, not to say that there's not, but I've never had one in my employment.
Wow.
Yeah. So, but I, I know they have had repeats, of course, and so.
And I'm Brian Blanton, I'm a CPA and partner with Road from Austin, I helped them on a lot of the business plan. There's a lot of details go into what they have to provide for these facilities. You gotta look at the transportation, a lot of them, you know, they're, they're there, they've gotta be transported, so you have the vehicles, you've got a kitchen staff cooking, providing the meals, and, and then you have the programs that have to come into play. So, in, in my line of work, and I'm sure everyone sitting here at some point has probably had been affected by the opioid issues, relatives, whoever. And, you know, trying to get them back in this process, the 90 days where that becomes an advantage is you kinda have a captive audience. You know, they're there, and they know that's their next step to hopefully turning their lives around. So have enough facility, and, and you hope they become a productive part back in the community. We need workers, we need those things, and, and as he said, I've had a lot of clients that have utilized the workforce there, and they have been very pleased. You know, it's, the success rate a lot of times is better with it than you would just straight-out hires, because they really want to try to make a difference. And, you know, that's, that's what attracted me to this project. And they'll be employing 20 people, you know, through the different aspects, you know, kitchen staff and around the clock, and so that adds back to the, the area. And then taking some of the burden off from a tax perspective, I've, I've done governmental audits and done a lot of work over the years, and I know when it comes budget time, trying to find ways to come up with those, those additional dollars makes a huge difference. And with the DOC being behind the program, and really wanting it to be a success, that helps pull those funds, so.
Thank you for that.
And we, we've spoken with Todd Higgin, who's been very involved with this program, and he's considered this program, our program, the number one in the whole state, because we need this program down, back down here badly.
Any other discussion questions?
This money that would go toward this, of course, you all know, is not taxpayer money. It's money that, that, I guess you, I don't know if you can call it flow-through, free or not, but it comes from the feds to the state and it on through, and we get it in at different, in different, at different times, I think. Right now, I guess we need to discuss whether we, the amount, and possibly if we do it, so, it's up to the board.
How much opioid money do you have?
Around 170,000 right now, but we're getting money in all the time. You just joined the Kroger settlement, so that would be more money, and it's spread out over 10 years, that you'll be getting funds in.
I don't wanna delay the process, I have to make a motion that we do the 75.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Addington made the motion, Mr. Manis' second, any more discussion? They're close, I think it'll be good for everyone's
I'll take it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is new business, and Ms. Tammy Taylor, I think.
Tammy Taylor, Commissioner revenue. And I've been doing a lot of research on what I'm bringing to you, so I'm a little bit here and there with it, but what I am here to talk about is business and 762 forms in particular. If my office sends out a 762 form to a business, and I believe that you were in business January 1st, and I have the right to assess you for your business personal property, so I would expect it to come back to me with your business personal property information on it, or otherwise your documentation that you weren't in Scott County, or that you had closed business prior to January 1st of that tax year. And that breaks me down to my specific machinery and tools, on logging equipment, and it looks like that that's not been assessed by the Commissioner's Office in Scott County, and it is supposed to be, by my research, and I have talked to Lee County, Wise County, Russell County, Washington County, they all do assess logging equipment. So I should be assessing logging equipment. I send a 762 to a logging company, and I get pushed back that I'm not supposed to be doing that. In my research, I am supposed to be doing that. So in order for me not to do that, I would need an exemption or something local in place that says that Scott County doesn't want to do that. I don't want, I don't wanna show favoritism to anybody, and I'm a tough-love kinda person, I guess, I'm strict about things. If I'm to assess it for a hairstylist, I'm to assess it for a logging company, I'm to assess it for a CPA, who left, but he's not here anyways. But, across the board, this is where I'm at, there is a code 58.1-3508 that would possibly put into effect, or could be put out there, separate classification and exemption from state taxation on machinery and tools and supplies used in harvesting forest products. But all of our surrounding counties do assess logging equipment, so why wouldn't I? And then talking to Lee County, Lee County says, our loggers say their equipment's in Scott County. Some of that happens with Wise County. Well, if, and I'm not gonna speak for them, but if I was to be assessing that logger, and he told me that he was in Lee County, then I would ask him for his copy of his timber contract and the property that he's actually on January 1st, document it, I need documentation. So, I mean, I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just trying to do my job. So I'm bringing it to you whether or not I should do my job. I wanna do my job. I'm not afraid of hard work, I'm not afraid to go against the grain. And do what we want to.
So we're the only county around that doesn't
Or has
That surrounds us, and I actually just spoke to Washington County just this morning, so I can say I have talked to all of them.
Tammy, I appreciate the efforts your office has been making in picking up taxes that have not been paid in the past, and not just this logging, but I think there's others you're bringing in too. And at this point in time
We are in discovery mode, and I'm, I'm not a nosy person, but I will drive around and look for ya.
Good. At this point in time, in the next two or three years, we're gonna have to generate all of the taxes that we can, and personally, I don't think we should do an exemption. The board, you know, please express how you feel about it.
I know there aren't a lot of logging companies that end up, there's timber companies and whatnot, so, you know, it's, it's kinda odd that all the counties around us have been assessing this and we've not been, and I wonder if that's not putting some undue burden on us by, you know, equipment coming here more often or whatnot.
Well, like I said, if it's here January the 1st, your equipment's here in Scott County, I feel like you owe me a 762 that tells myself, or otherwise you're gonna prove to me.
At this point in time, I think, and Sally and Frieda can correct me if I'm wrong, but at this point, we would have to have a public hearing, correct?
Only if you're gonna exempt them.
Only with an exemption, okay.
Cause that would need to be in ordinance.
Okay. So, I say you go ahead and do it?
Do it.
Send them.
Go for it.
Go for it, go for it.
Tell me go back to work, and I'll go get busy, and whatever y'all wanna do, but I'm at your mercy to make a decision.
Take a motion in a second, or do we?
Do you want a motion?
Tell me go back to work, or not go back to work.
All in favor of her going back to work?
Amen.
Go back to work?
Thank you all, I don't ever wish a favoritism to anybody, but when something comes up, that I need clarification, I will be back.
Like I said, I think you're doing a good job for what you're doing, keep it up.
Thank you all for everything that you've done for me, I go get us some more money. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tammy, and my goodness, I appreciate you for what you've done. Because that took some time.
Well, I'm never been afraid of hard work, and I've learned a lot in the six months. I've been here forever, it seems like, but I have learned tremendous, and I hope to learn more.
You are doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda under new business is Duffield Day's funding request. Do we have anyone here? Just speak on that.
No, they just sent in a letter and it's on their tab.
Mr. Kenny Fannin passed away, and I noticed his picture on there. In the past, I think the supervisors have approved a thousand dollars.
Is that what we've done in the past?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manus made the motion for a one thousand dollar.
From contingency.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Glover, second. Any discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Y'all come down?
Next on the agenda is a smart scale application resolution of support. And there was a little confusion on this at our last Lenoisco meeting. They, Lenoisco described this new roadwork to be done at Duffield at the intersection, at the red line, but that's not the case. This road, this is going to be where you come up from Natural Tunnel by the Redstone Drive-In on to the four lane. And what they're going to do is extend the lane going north so that you don't just go across the road. You, if you're going north or south, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, you go north and then there's a long exit to get onto twenty-three, correct?
Yeah, it's an R cut, so you wouldn't be able to come at the end of eight-seventy-one and twenty-three, you won't be able to take the left to go south. You will have to go north and then use the R cut to go back south.
In other words, you can't go straight across the highway and go back south from it. It's pretty tough getting out of there in a truck. I know that for a fact.
Let me read what we've got here on it. It's kind of confusing. The US twenty-three at Natural Tunnel Parkway intersection realignment project scope currently consists of realigning the existing intersection at US twenty-three and Natural Tunnel Parkway, Route eight-seventy-one, and will shift it approximately one hundred feet to the north to improve site distance. The existing US twenty-three northbound right lane will remain in place with a storage of a hundred-and-fifty-foot and a taper of a hundred-and-fifty-foot. The project will reconstruct the southbound left turn lane on US twenty-three onto Natural Tunnel Parkway to have two-hundred-foot of taper and four-hundred-foot of storage. And that will definitely be an improvement.
Yeah, there was just a rec there last week.
Yeah. The next place, and I think it's on the agenda, maybe to talk about it later, is the Clinchport intersection. And they've not done anything yet, but I assume from this that they, and that's just my assumption, they may do, try to do the same thing down there because it's dangerous to go on straight across that road.
An R cut was discussed there, where you would come back to Fairview Road and turn to go south.
Okay, any questions before we take a motion on a resolution of support?
What would you take and come across there and make an extra lane to go south on?
I don't think there was room, from what, when we discussed this before, I don't think there was room to do that. They looked at that too, at both places. And down at Clinchport, you've got, there's no room there, and there's not only the Natural Tunnel. So, do we have a motion to support this resolution of support for smart scale?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Manus made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Skeen, second. Any more discussion? If not, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution of support passes. Next on the agenda under new business is solid waste presentation.
So, I was asked at the last meeting to come up with some things for solid waste. This is pre-brief. I will be joining the solid waste committee again, and we'll come back to you all with solid recommendations from the committee. That's the way the process was originally set up. But I do have a couple of things just to share today. The solid waste budget for fiscal year twenty-five that you all just approved, you have refuse collections is seven-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. The man solid waste center budget is three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-five-eighty-four, and the transfer station budget is nine-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-four-sixty-six. So, about six percent of your total county budget is for solid waste disposal, and that total is two-million-five-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. So, it is a large part of the county operations. Some history on the solid waste centers, because we do have four new members, just for some background for everybody. Originally, the sites were manned forty-eight hours per week when open. In two thousand fourteen, due to budget constraints, the number of attendance was reduced and the gates were left open when not manned. Each site contains green boxes for household trash, cardboard recycling, roll-off bins for large items and furniture, and one for metal recycling. Sites also have a designated used oil bin that is owned and serviced by an independent recycler. All sites except for Yuma and East Carter's Valley are open from seven AM Monday morning to eight PM Saturday night. Yuma and East Carter's Valley, both of those close each night at eight o'clock because of their proximity to Tennessee. The solid waste committee was formed in two thousand nineteen by the Board of Supervisors, and it was to look at ways to improve solid waste operations. The committee has two Board of Supervisor members, which is currently Michelle and Danny, the Director of Public Works, the Leader Control Officer, the Solid Waste Manager, and the Senior Truck Driver. In the past, the committee has made recommendations to the Board of Supervisors that were not implemented. One of these in particular was a schedule that staggered the days the sites were open and the hours they were open. That was so they would be manned when they were open to control the trash that was coming and going. And after a public outcry at a meeting, the plan was not implemented. So, some short-term goals, like I said, I'll be joining the solid waste committee to work with them on recommendations for concrete short-term goals. The committee member recommendations will be considered when developing best practices for the solid waste operations. Any recommendations will be presented by the solid waste committee to the full Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors will incorporate any changes to operations in their strategic and comprehensive plans. So, for long-term goals, we will be doing a strategic and comprehensive plan later this year, get those processes started. The strategic plan will be a roadmap for staff to navigate and move any improved changes with solid waste operations forward. The strategic plan will also give the Board of Supervisors a tool to explain why things are done in a certain manner when they receive questions from their constituents. It will ensure that we're all on the same page in moving forward with what the board chooses for that to look like. I do have several ideas that I'll be sharing with the committee at their next meeting, and we'll see where it goes from there. But there's a couple of things I'm waiting on quotes for that I think would be good ideas. Everything has a cost, as you know. We operate as efficient and cheap as we can now, but it is costing us with abuse at the sites when things coming in that shouldn't be, and things put in the wrong boxes and such. So, I will be working on this going forward, and we will stay in touch with the full board so that you know what's being worked on.
Thank you very much. We're keeping eyes.
Please accept Sheriff's Office, Virginia, DCJS SRO grant program five-two-one-two-eight-eight dash F-Y twenty-five, grant number two-five-two-one-one-C, totaling two-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. Accept Sheriff's Office, Virginia, DCJS SRO grant program five-two-one-two-eight-eight dash five-one, I mean five-Y two-five, grant number two-five-nine-two-seven-E, totaling two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. Accept Sheriff's Office, VA, DCJS Burn Jack Grant Program, five-two-five-eight-seven-six dash LE Equipment Grant, number five-two-eight-eight-eight-zero, totaling sixteen-thousand-sixteen dollars with established budget code one-thousand-dash-three-one-two-seven-five-dash-four-zero-eight-one-zero-five. Accept Commonwealth Attorneys, Virginia, DCJS Victim Witness Grant Program, two-five-dash-oh-one-one-five-zero-BW22, totaling ninety-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars for the established budget code one-thousand-dash-two-two-two-zero-five. Accept Commonwealth Attorneys, Virginia, DCJS, Virginia Sexual and Domestic Violence Victim Fund, Grant Program, five-two-five-three-eight-four-dash-FY-two-five, grant number two-five-dash-eight-five-three-zero-five-BB-two-five, totaling forty-five thousand with the established budget code one-thousand-dash-two-two-two-six-zero. And accept Tourism's, Virginia Tourism Corporation, twenty-twenty-four DMO Grant totaling eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty dollars with established budget code one-thousand-dash-eight-one-nine-zero-zero-dash-four-zero-three-six-zero-zero-dash-zero-one-two-one-five for advertising. And that's all of the grants.
Any discussion on these? Have a motion to accept these? We'll keep an eye.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manus made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Glover, second. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, our appointments. Ms. Tina?
You have one appointment to the Planning Commission. Glenn Broadwater has been serving. He did reapply. You have one other applicant, Sophia Davidson.
We have a nomination for the Planning Commission?
I'll make the nomination for Glenn Broadwater.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll make a motion that nomination cease and we vote by acclamation.
Do we have a second that nomination cease and we vote by acclamation?
I'll make that second.
Okay. Sadie can make the motion, and Mr. Manus, second. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Glenn Broadwater, Planning Commission. County Attorney's Report.
Good job on the nomination. Y'all got that.
Thank you. That's probably the first time this year.
I don't have anything to add to my report.
I had you right.
Any questions? I'll try to answer.
Good job. Just keep us straight.
Yes, thank you.
And the county administrator's report, Ms. Thompson.
You have your green sheet in your folders for claims and treasurer's accountability. The current balance after claims is six-million-eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Last year, we went live with MUNA software in July, so you'll see on your comparison report, we don't have anything reported because we were still between two systems and we didn't have an accurate number. That'll be the same for the next couple of months. That's why that, for last year, will be missing. And then as far as claims for July, total three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. You also have a list of those that's over five thousand if you want to look through those and see if you have any questions.
Did the school system complete their usage?
We did pay out the school system amount that we owe, yes. If you don't have any questions, the amount to prove today is three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
We have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll move.
Mr. Giedrich made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Skeen, second. Any discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I do have a couple of things under miscellaneous. The Planning Commission will be having a public hearing on the comprehensive plan update next week, and that will come to you all, most likely for a public hearing to update the comp plan in August. This is basically for the transportation section that has to be in the smart scale application that's due August first, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. I have went through, Ms. Carter helped update the tables with the new data from the last census into the comp plan, so there'll be some minor changes along with the transportation section. And then I had a citizen reach out to me yesterday about, they had called Morgan Griffith's office to request that the forestry service be supplied a full-time, like, search and rescue type person, where we have our EMS agencies tied up at the Devil's Bathtub. You know, that's taken resources away from our EMS agencies. If we have an emergency call somewhere else in the county and they're doing a search and rescue on federal land, then that, you know, could adversely affect, you know, a citizen in the county. So, I'll keep in touch and see how that goes, and see if the congressman does get back in touch with the citizen to see how that's progressing. And I'll also look and see about the possibility of requesting reimbursement for those search and rescues on the federal side. So, I'll be working on that this upcoming month as well. But that's all I had under miscellaneous.
Good job on that question. Next, on the agenda?
Good morning, everyone. Y'all moving along quick, so I'll try to keep the train going here. Well, I have some pictures playing. Let's let them go through. White whale. I got a lot of pictures. I'm going to try just to let them circle through while I talk, if that's okay. Real quick, first I'll talk about regional parks. Keith Royal Park, just looking for you. It's a nice park out there. I want to thank Scott Service. Scott Service does a lot of work for us out there to keep that park in good shape, so couldn't do it without them. Duffield Community Park, over the last year or two, I've partnered with the Lily program out there. Done a lot of work on the softball field. Just recently purchased some bricks to repair the mound out there, so, you know, slowly but surely, working on things and getting some things going out. Duffield too did a pretty, still got some work to do, but, you know, just doing what we can as we go, so. Obviously, everybody knows it's been hot within high temperatures. We've really had a lot of use of our small boat access. I still feel like that's one of the best investments the county's done. It was a relatively small funding to get those started, and that's just something great for the county to have safe places to go in and out and not have to, you know, bother landowners or try to find somewhere, you know, maybe not as, you know, adequate to get out in. So, I do want to thank Gil and his public work staff. They maintain those properties for us. Again, I'm a one-man wreck department. All this stuff I couldn't do without county people and workers and stuff like that, so I want to thank them. Right now, I'm in the summer tennis and junior golf programs. They actually conclude next week. Great turnout. We had forty-eight kids in our summer tennis, twenty-four kids in our junior golf. You'll see some pictures here in a little bit that show some of our tennis and golf kids out there working hard. They've worked hard. It's been hot. That's why we do it early. Everybody always asks, why y'all do it early in the morning for little kids? Well, because that tennis court gets about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty degrees in the middle of the day, so. I really want to thank, again, the trend of people helping me. My instructors, Sarah Arnold, Marley Brooks, Maggie Drizzle, Devon Sernan, Eden Ward, Marley Hensley, Noah Hensley, and Cam Harrison. Without these kids, these young people, they're not kids, they're young people, young adults, I couldn't do what they do. They're great instructors. They know what they're talking about, and more than anything, they're good with the kids. The kids have fun. And I get a lot of compliments from parents on the people that are helping me, so I've got some great help. I've got some great help. So that's pretty much it for the rec department course, you'll see some pictures of the kids out there, me standing around acting like I know what I'm doing, but they, we have some great kids, we have great parents, great kids in the community, so. Hopping down to the golf course, got nothing but good news there. Revenue this year, you can see there, is the highest it's ever been, as far as I know, I've been here sixteen, seventeen years, and it's by far the highest revenue we've ever had. You know, I think I've come before you before and everything's been good, everything's been... There's an old scene picture, you found some old pictures. You're fine, keep going.
I know what you gave me.
Yeah, that's fine, keep going, must've had some old, y'all seen those before. The highest, the highest revenue number since I've been here and it's, it's a thirty-eight percent increase over last year, so I keep thinking, man, it's gonna slow down, but man, we're rolling up there. Busy, busy, busy. Memberships, I'll talk about that for a minute. Currently, we're at seventy-two members and that might not sound like a lot, but even as of maybe three, four years ago, we stayed around twenty-five, thirty members. And just here in the last couple, two years, we've had a huge influx of memberships, more than doubled. And majority of these new members, the vast majority are young adults and teenagers picking up the game. Sometimes you gotta show them the ways a little bit and scold them a little bit because they, you know, haven't been on a golf course before, but once you get that going, that's the future, that's the people that's gonna continue to be our patrons, you know. So huge, you go there, you'll see a lot of high school kids, a lot of teenagers, a lot of young adults, and that's something we really push for and I'm glad to see that now. We really try to get that younger group playing and it's, it's come to fruition. We've got a ton of younger players up there. I want to thank the board, the new deck up there looks great, I don't know if y'all seen it in person, you can come there and see, it's awesome, makes the view even better up there. We got a new storage building for equipment that was much needed, it's almost complete, there was a little hiccup with the garage doors, but they should be here in two weeks and it'll be complete. So we can put some of our more expensive, nicer equipment in the storage building versus kind of out in the elements with all the hydraulics and electronics and stuff they have nowadays, so I want to thank the board for all that. And lastly, the new carts, the new carts have been universally praised by our customers, it was much needed. Kind of a note to let you know how important carts are, especially for us and our terrain and our type of golf course, cart fees are forty-one percent of our revenue, which is by far, I mean, by far, the highest line item revenue we have. That's the lifeblood of our revenue at the golf course because not many people walk that course, not many people take a walk and cart with them, it's a, it's a rough terrain, so more than any pla- any other golf course, people are getting carts, you know, you don't see, besides the high school kids in the following, that's about why most of them walk, you know. We do have a few walking, you know, some people that do it for exercise, but the vast majority are carts, so that's why those carts are so important. And all these numbers are before we implemented that price increase, so with our, how, how busy we are and with that, all these numbers should just continue to go up. And that small increase, everyone understood it, no one, no one's complained of it, you know, it wasn't, you know, I think it was the right move to do that amount. Because like I said, a lot of courses jumped up a lot and that's where we saw a lot of people come from other courses, like, hey, they went up ten, twelve dollars around, we're coming here, you know. So I think that was the right move to keep, to keep what we got going, you know, so. I just want to thank Ms. Darnes, I want to thank the board, y'all have been great, I want to thank you for your support. I'll mention all these people, but I couldn't do it without you all either, so it takes, it takes everybody to do what I do, so. But things are rolling right along with the kids and with the golf course, so I appreciate if you have any questions, I'll try to, try to answer best I can.
We did have a little discussion during our pre-meeting about extended hours during the summer months, if you had a chance to look at that.
Me and Ms. Darnes talked briefly about it and I'm gonna try to implement almost like a, like a testing phase, kind of to see how it goes, to see if it's, you know, I guess for Blackwood Bear Time, is the juice worth the squeeze? We may do some, y'all know if we're gonna do a month where we do that or like certain days to see, to see what traffic that generates and see what revenue that generates, staying open later. You know, we have a small staff and we try to keep the, you know, we get a lot of comp hours, we try to manage that the best we can, so, yeah, unfortunately, sometimes we close, you know, an hour, maybe an hour and a half earlier than some courses do during the summer, but we've talked and I want to try to implement almost like a testing phase to see how that goes, where we stay open later and see if that generates the traffic we think, and I, I think it may do it, but, you know, I don't want to just jump into it without seeing what it's gonna do, so. Might try to implement that the middle or toward the end of this, end of this month or possibly in August, but I'll try before our next board meeting when I present, I'll try to have some information on that for you all, so make that something we can look at for the next, you know, summer, next busy season, so. Because we stay busy till about, really till about October, and I believe I come back before y'all, I believe it's October, so that'll be a good time to see, you know, how that, how that did, if it was, you know, beneficial for the public and for us as well, you know, so. But we've definitely had tons of traffic, so I, now, now's probably the time to try it, for sure, with, with the amount of members we have and the play we have.
The other thing, we talked a little bit about this pickleball restriping, what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so I've got a company, I have not talked to yet, it's the company we've used in the past to resurface courts. Like I said, once I get, next week I conclude my junior golf and summer tennis, I want to reach out to them and see what that cost looks like. I, I can't imagine if you're just doing just the lines for pickleball and not doing like a separate, you know, nothing structural, it should be very manageable, I would think. And we can do that, of course, at our two courts. Now, as far as Weber City Courts, which we use and I'm thankful for the school system, we use those for our summer tennis. That would be a school, you know, and they, they may be fine with it, you know, that, I work with them, but that would be a school thing. But now for our two, the golf course, yeah, I could do it, you know, no problem without, you know, having to go through the other channels. You, you see a lot of people playing pickleball. We have what's called ten underlines, it was a big push they did where they had lines that were for smaller kids. And those ten underlines, they're not ideal, but they're kinda, some of them, you can kinda, they're close to pickleball, so people do play pickleball there on kind of those makeshift lines, but no, we, I think we could look at doing that and it would be, I, I can't see it being a financially big number, so, but here in the next week or two, once my summer programs are, I want to try to reach out to them and see what it looks like, but I, I can't imagine that being a problem. And they can, you know, the, the standard tennis net, and I'm just going off the top of my head here, I've looked it up before, I want to say it's maybe just like two or three inches off what a pickleball net is, so, I mean, it would work for recreational play. You know, you wouldn't have to do a separate standalone pickleball court, you know, so. But I think that'd be a great idea.
Derek, could you get in touch with Scotty at Gay City and see what he thinks about doing Weber Cities possibly?
I've talked to the principals down there at Weber City Old Mentry, you know, Ms. Pine and Ms. White, I believe. Yes, and they are for it and they were, we, we kind of discussed it and they, they thought, why don't you do that? Well, that's not just me, you know, I can't say so. They, they have ten underlines there too, but they've kind of faded out when they resurfaced them last time, I think they renewed the ten and underlines. Again, I can't see that affecting their, you know, what they have with their high school teams and stuff, because it'll be lines that don't affect them, should be. But, no, I, I'll, once I find out our end of it, that's when I may reach out to Scotty from the school board and say, hey, you know, this is something y'all, here's what it costs me to do, y'all want to do it, you know, I think it might be beneficial, so. But definitely our two, I think I'll start there and I think, I think we can do that no problem.
Great. Are the tennis courts in Duffield, are they under the schools' jurisdiction?
So, no, so the ones on our property, on Duffield Community Park, those, those are ours. I know they're not in good shape, there's a whole history behind that that I want to get into, but structurally, foundation-wise, there's a problem there. We've actually repaired those, believe it or not, I think twice since I've been here, and I know you've seen it now, they, it, it doesn't look like we have, but.
It's rough.
It's rough. Long story short, back in the day, those were supposed to be four courts and it was gonna be for a high school tennis team and somehow, through all the channels, it got down to three and the, the high school tennis, they kind of became an afterthought. The, the plans for them never really followed through as far as like a high school team and lots more played with that, so. Me and Ms. Darnes have briefly discussed some options there. There's some different things there. I'm not, personally, I'm not a fan of just going in and just repairing those tennis courts and fix, because I know we're gonna see that same issue, I've seen it twice already, you know, it's not a cheap, it's not super expensive, it's not a cheap thing to really resurface them and fix them. And I'm just afraid that because of the history of the structure and the foundation that was maybe not done the best way, I'm really afraid those issues, well, they crept up twice again since we've done, and that, and those, believe it or not, those courts are the newest courts in. They might not be, them and Weber City are pretty close. You know, the ones at the golf course, they're sixty, seventy years old and besides for just some small cracks, they look better than the ones at Duffield that are maybe twenty-five, thirty years old. And it's all about, you know, when you're building something, it's all about the foundation, you know, and I think there was some foundational problems. So there's some options there, I'm not really sure which route, again, maybe in October, I might have some options of, hey, here's what we maybe could do and here's what this may cost, like, there's, there's a couple of options out there. Not really sure which way yet, I want to go with that because they, they, they've been asked where they've been a problem. You know, we're trying to work on everything else there, but those tennis courts, I'm just, I'm afraid keeping them as tennis courts long-term, we're gonna just run into the same issue, so there, there's some things there we're gonna look at. And that was, that part was built with a grant, so there are, there is some channels too, I have to check before I, you know, change a lot to it, I have to kind of go through Richmond and make sure, and it should be fine, but there, you know, there is a channel of you, I can't, I need to have them a plan and let them know if I'm gonna alter things there. So, but no, it's on the radar and it's something that I've got to put some thought into to see what we think and the board thinks maybe might be the best, the best option out there.
Also, what's the difference between a member and just a player who's golfing?
Okay, so a membership at the golf course, what that entails is your green fee, so if you come up and play nine holes, run out of sixteen dollars, that's eight dollar green fee, eight dollar cart fee. If you do a membership for a calendar for the year, you know, for a full year, you don't pay green fees, you just pay cart fees. So there is a number there where it's benefit, you know, if you play quite a bit, you know, once you hit a certain number, you're, you're coming out ahead. For, you know, just people that play occasionally, you know, it doesn't make sense, but we still have the cheapest memberships in the area, but basically it just takes care of green fees, so if you want to walk, you're, you know, you pay your membership and you don't pay nothing, if you want a cart, you just kind of pay a cart fee for a year, so. The big thing, we, we do a pretty good promotion with the junior kids where their, their junior membership, as long as you're in high school, you know, as long as you're in school, high school, still even into college, you get that junior membership and it's significantly cheaper, and that's what's really pushed this new influx of young kids and that's been a good thing, but, you know, there, it is a high number, you know, to me, I don't play that much golf. I think you need to play about, and now with this increase, I want to say about forty times and then you start coming out ahead, so, you know, it's, it, you know, people, and there's people that play well more than forty times a year, but that, that's how the membership works. And you do get a discount and some people take advantage of it, you get a discount on the rent. The room rental's only a hundred, you get it for seventy-five if you're a member, so that's, that's your, that's your two things that come along with being a member, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Man?
Again, I appreciate all the work, Scott Service, my workers, you all, everybody, you know, one-man rec department doesn't work with one man, so I appreciate everybody, thank you.
Derek, you've done a good job and continue to do so.
Well, I thank you.
Derek's one of my old kids, I'm proud of him.
You taught me well, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Man, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cox?
Your head welcome. So, so thank you all for moving back to the mornings. I always like to, you know, kind of go through the things that I've been doing in the last quarter, so I'll start with the local events. As you all know, I talked about, we were in April, we were getting ready for the colonial experience, the one of, one of the big Virginia two fifty events, and so we had that and I will have to say that that was an incredible event. Bill and his family came and I knew he'd gone in and then, but I never saw him come out and then finally, after about three hours, he showed back up and I think you all thought it was a great event.
Oh, yes.
The folks that you see in, in here, they stay in character and you can listen to Sally Kelly, Sally was Twitter painted because she had sons on both sides and one was getting ready to be tarred feathers, so, yeah. So they all stayed in character and we walked up to them and it was, it was, it was a great event. We saw a lot of people that, you know, were not from this area and there were a lot of kids that showed up, so it turned out to be a really awesome event. And this young man tells Sally all about how the internet will appear, you know, like in about two hundred years from now, so, you know, that's something that she can, she can look about then.
Don't worry, it'll be invented in a, really, really.
And she, she's very gracious, you know, she stayed in character and I probably, I probably would not have been as gracious, but she's a very nice lady. Had the Jeep Jam Memorial Day weekend and that was their third year and they had to extend the footprint because they had so many Jeeps. I think they ended up with almost two hundred Jeeps that day. And they do a tour through the town and vendors are set up and, you know, it's just a really good event for downtown Gate City. And because they did that on Memorial Day weekend, Nicholsville Days changed their day because they'd already, they had always done Nicholsville Days on the same day, so they changed their day to two weeks later. And that was an excellent event, they do a really, really good job. My favorite event, which Bill's wife and daughter put on and Bill helps a lot too, is the hot dog eating contest. If you can see the guys down there in the left-hand corner and then the young man right there, you know, with his face that's all contorted, I was sitting right in front of him and I kept waiting. That's really a fun bit because you want to get somebody who's getting ready to vomit and that child, that child did have to get up and go throw up. So I didn't catch that, I'm so upset, but I will have another chance apparently. Apparently, Gate City is doing a hot dog eating contest for their Fourth of July on Saturday, so that's just something that campus is, campus is, Campus Drive is sponsoring that, so. And Hilton's had their community celebration this past weekend for their Independence Day, they do a great job. I didn't go because I didn't think that they would do it. I was getting ready to walk out the door, my husband said, where are you going? And he said, they're not gonna do that, he said, it's storming out there, they went ahead and it was, it was great. I asked Matt and he said, oh yeah, they went ahead. You have some new businesses that have come into town, the venue at Circle B Stables, that is absolutely beautiful and she said the bickers are such sweet people and, you know, they're working, it's a wedding venue, but you can also have meetings up there and you can also do special events like the young, the little young lady with the unicorn, they have a little pony that they dress up to be a unicorn, that's in Nicholsville, it's just very sweet. The wind building, if you all have gone by there, he is, he has some booths set up there in there for antiques and he is also going to open up an Italian restaurant, I was gonna say French, but that's not correct, and he's working on that and apparently, I talked to him for quite a while today. He's from Florida and he says that, I asked him who was gonna be the chef and he says he was the chef, that he had an Italian restaurant in Florida, so, I mean, I walked in, it looked like he's supposed to be open sometime this month. And then Mr. McMurray sold both of his buildings, apparently they're, they sold them as separate. Leslie Starnes bought one side and then another couple, the couple right there on the right, they bought the other side. And I don't know exactly what they're doing, the building was primed yesterday to get ready to be painted and I think you will see something in there relatively soon, so downtown Gate City is gonna be booming. Someone new is going into where Made by Hands Forl is and also Wildwood on Jackson, there is a salon that's going in there and my granddaughter and I walked by there and she said, Penny, a salon, she said, I can't wait. And I'm like, a salon? She said, oh, will you take me in and have a spa day? And I'm like, okay, so. And then I think everybody was majorly excited that the Redstone has come back in and apparently they're doing gangbusters. I hear that he's even serving ribeye steak and that's, you know, it's good. And they, they caught up and they're learning as they go and everything. So goodbye, stop with the Redstone. Highlights, as you all know, it is the Carter Folks' fiftieth anniversary. And they are doing a lot of special shows this year. Always, I'm going to play this for you. There is a, there's a clock in the frame. Everybody loves the clock. That's the Jack Creek clock which runs around North Carolina. And somebody always walks, tries to move on to it. I'm very nice and I don't get the ring, I'm very, very, very. But, that kind of goes on. There's also, I can stop that. So I did get Virginia Tourism Corporation grant for eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. We applied for twenty thousand, but apparently, and it had something to do with Go Virginia. Those twenty thousands most were awarded down to like eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And we applied to, I don't know why, I don't know why. We applied to market the bounty trail. And that's something new that we started this year. We're going to be doing a video. I'm trying to get that set up with the folks to do, to do the shooting July the twenty-third. We'll do a social media campaign. I started doing a sunflower selfie trail. So David Mann gave us a ton of sunflower seeds to give throughout the county. And anybody who wanted to plant sunflowers, all they had to do was come in and we'd give them sunflower seeds. Mr. Mann has planted some. And so we ended up with probably about twenty people that were committed to doing it. And I've gone around and checked on the folks. And I'm going to have probably ten of those go off for one reason or the other, mainly the deer ate them. And I didn't know that deer ate sunflowers. But Tina, Tina's got a nice batch coming up. She'll tell you if she doesn't, but there, it's a really nice, nice batch. Because I've seen everybody's. And I'll tell you, the two best ones are Mr. Qualls on Anglers Way. And then the second one back there where the emus are, the one that's there on the highway, on Highway twenty-three in the back. It's not as much as the one on Anglers Way. Anglers Way looks like it's about ready to bloom any time now. And also Andrea Lawson there in Hilton's near the rally mark. She has sunflowers that are this tall. And those will be getting ready to bloom too. And I haven't turned the map on because I'm going to have to do some reconfiguration. Because, you know, some of the folks, like I say, are falling off. So I don't want to send people to homes where there's not sunflowers because one of them is way down in Yuma. And I went down there and she, you know, things didn't work out so that she could get hers planted and everything. But when we do the Harvest Moon Celebration in September, we are also going to try to do a farm-to-table set up in King's Alley where the everything is locally sourced. Scott Gerald is going to be cook for that. He will use the kitchen at the vocational school to do food prep. It'll probably be about seven o'clock, probably only maybe twenty-five, thirty-five, just to see tickets sold, just to see how this goes. He already had, he's already working on his menu. And it's mainly just watching season. So there will be, you know, too bad it's not in the spring and we don't have any strawberries. But I set this marketing campaign up so that there will be some monies and everything left to go in the spring. And they're going, they're planning on doing a strawberries and cream event with, using Mann's strawberries at David Quillan's. Is David Quillan, Little Stony, the barn, the barn there, Stony Creek? He has offered.
Dwight.
Dwight. Dwight, Mr. Quillan has offered to let us use that facility and do an event there. So, so, you know, we've got a good plan to, you know, kind of go throughout the year with this and just kind of keep it relevant and in people's, you know, in, in their faces. And one of the good things is, and this came right with the opening of the repair of the Devil's Bathtub. We won an award from Blue Ridge Country as best swimming hole in Virginia. And one thing about this, it was totally unsolicited. You know, a lot of those awards that folks win and everything, you know, they go in and they say, vote for us and do this and do that. This was unsolicited. We don't have the funds to get people to say, you know, go vote for us and everything. But anyway, I will send this around and it's kind of marked here so you can see. I did run a ad with them. So this just came out. And, you know, I still, it still amazes me after twelve years, the number of calls I get from the Devil's Bathtub. And people are still going, the folks that have Devil's Fork Campground, they're, they're booming. You know, that was a nice little business model right there. And I think they're ready to accept our big campers right now. So they're going great guns. We got an Emmy nod with the PBS special that Appalachian folks did. And I don't know if you all saw this. I can, we played it on Facebook. But this was the last film that Cotton Roberts was in. And it's very, and it's some, you know, some of the things that he said in there, it's just very sweet. It's a sweet nod to the town. And we didn't win, we didn't get the Emmy, but we were nominated. I think it has related to that win. We finally got our kiosk.
Thank goodness.
Thank goodness. But, so we had this kiosk and it is up at Natural Tunnel State Park. It's sitting there at the bathrooms. Well, we cut that. And it's very interactive. It's based upon our website. But on one side of it, there on the right-hand side, you can send postcards. And it's full of, you know, sights and scenes around here in Scott County. But I'm not real sure that Robert wants that big kiosk. That kiosk right there was designed for handicaps so that you could slide a wheelchair under it. It may be a little intrusive. So I think that's going to go probably someplace in downtown Gate City. So we're going to switch out with him. I have another one that's just a television screen. So, and I think he wants that one there. And we've already ordered them out and everything. It's just a matter of moving that. And it will take probably twenty people to move that kiosk. It's very heavy, so we'll have to get Randall and his folks to do that. Maybe the entire Scott Services crew. Upcoming projects, like I said, the Scott County selfie trail. And that is the sign right there on the bottom. That's what we've been putting up. I gave Chris his and if you, see, I've, I've given signs. I've either given all of the signs out or I've put them up myself. And yesterday, I had known that there were emus there on Highway twenty-three. But I was putting, I was putting the sign in there at Mr. Qualls. And the next thing I know, I look up and those emus are right there on my head. And I just about passed out. So, you know, that's, you know, I'd seen them and I thought I was hallucinating the first time I saw them. So I thought, surely that's not there. But they are, but they're right there in the front of the field. They're not where the sunflowers are, so you can drive on down back into there. He has a huge field right there, but they're not quite ready. So I talked about the Harvest Moon Celebration. We're going to do that. All of the folks that are members of the bounty trail, they're going to, they're going to set up at Harvest Moon. That's September the twenty-first. Scott County VA two fifty. I have to tell you, you have to come to the Gate City Fourth of July Parade. You know, last year, we had Paul Revere as the grand marshal. And I'm not really sure if people got that because we had Paul Revere, you know, ride down through there and say, he was on horse, saying the British are coming, the British are coming, but I'm still not sure if people got that. But this year, Daniel Boone is the grand marshal. We have a gentleman coming from Kentucky who will be Daniel Boone. One of the things that they want to do in the fall is a flintlock turkey shoot using flintlock guns. Now Jeff Arrington has access to flintlock guns. Not very many people have flintlock guns, so we'll have to switch out and trade out. But the big celebration that they will be having next year is the Daniel Boone Blazing of the Wilderness Trail. That is the two hundred and fiftieth celebration of Blazing of the Wilderness Trail. And that is also the year that John and Rebecca Anderson got married. And it's, they either got married in June or January. If you look at the documentation, it says June or January. So I don't really know. So anyway, we're going to do their marriage and try to do a barn raising. There was an old log cabin that was dead, that was donated to them. We tore down on Copper Creek. So they're going to try to do a barn raising at that time too. So that will be a big event and thank you for allocating five thousand dollars to that group. That will go a long way because I think they raised probably three thousand dollars for this event last year in donations. The other upcoming community events, there's a list of them. Red, White and Blue, the Baptist Col Bash, Harvest Moon, King Alleywing. And then you'll have the Dungannon, Dungannon will be on the fourth, as in tomorrow. Weber City does their fourth on Thursday, on Friday. And then you have Duffield Days, you know, Papa Joe Smitty Music Fest. Matt's Band is playing at the Papa Joe Smitty Music Fest. Then the Santa Train, Dungannon Christmas, Nicholsville Christmas. And, you know, the year just goes on and on. Free publicity this year will at two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five and fifty cents. And I calculate that. I go through, I get Google Alerts that shows me where things that talk about Scott County. And I go through, and I, I mean, that's not made up. I do calculate that. And that is about the most that we've been at at this time of the year. So you will surpass probably, you know, two hundred and fifty. So you'll be at about three million dollars since I've been tracking this. And, you know, hopefully that will continue. Continue to send out the weekly email. I think folks pass that along. And in social media, social media is just one of those things, things that's hard to gauge as to what gets views. Everybody loved the sunflower thing. Then the next one was the rein actors. But then, you know, then you get all of these people that love these goats. And these are the goats that hang out around my house. And somebody was, you know, quick enough to point out that this is the new Scott County road crew. And that we just dug a break that day. So ladies, if you want the goats, just come and get them. So, you know, I mean, they, I can't believe those goats are still alive. They've been there for almost well over two years now. And if you come down that way and if you have peanut butter crackers, they'll come up to your car and they'll go out of your hand. So they're big old goats and they do smell. So any questions? They do smell. Lord have mercy if you can tell they're around.
You're getting the planning for the August tourism work session?
Yes, August thirteenth.
Speak about that just a moment.
August thirteenth and we'll just, you know, I'll invite, you know, as many folks to come as, you know, I'll invite all of the folks that I work with locally and then regionally, part of Appalachia. Oh, did I tell you all that, that they had hired someone for the heart of Appalachia? Jeff has, Jeff was over the visitor center on the, on Interstate eighty-one. So he's very familiar with this area and with Virginia Tourism Corporation. So he knows how to work around the politics of that and get grants and things like that, so.
That's going to be at the Cove Bridge Center?
Cove Bridge, yes.
August thirteenth?
On August thirteenth, unless, that's what I have reserved. Unless we feel like we need to move to the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Intermodal Center. That can accommodate more people. But, you know, that Cove Bridge Center, we've done that before and that works pretty well, so. Anything else?
Thank you for all of you.
Thank you.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Board Supervisors Comments, Requests and Regulations. And we'll throw it out there to the board member.
I have my usual comments if anybody else wants to go first. Would you like me to go ahead?
Go right ahead, yes.
Calls received this month, eleven. What I call P.D.O.T. work orders, that's anything that's older than two weeks that hasn't been addressed. I had eight of those and residents have had follow-up contacts and those problems are being resolved. Orange trash bag complaints, I had zero. I just want to remind people at home that if the orange trash bags have been out in your neighborhood longer than two weeks, give me a call and we can help get those picked up. The mowing schedule, I'll be getting a weekly mowing schedule. The Fort Blackmore office, P.D.O.T., they're doing Twin Springs area this week. Also the Nicholsville area, Patonsville location, they're doing Yuma area, Tennessee State Line, the Highway twenty-three. And they do have two tractors in the Weber City area. They're also doing Fairview and Spears Valley. The contractor, which does secondary mowing, Easton and East and West Carter's Valley area. The other thing that I want to start mentioning each month is the EDA update. And as we heard today, people want to know what's going on with our economic development. So I'll be asking their department each month on any updates. The three locations would be Duffield, Riverside and Dungannon. And they report nothing new. We did have a inquiry about Riverside, but I think that's on hold at this point. We did get some information about a hotel at the Riverside property, about an out parcel. And the talks are continuing on that. That would require a county moral obligation with the Tobacco Commission. So that would require a loan guarantee on the part of Scott County. That was similar to the Dungannon project. I did ask a commercial developer, a friend of mine from another state, to visit the Riverside property and give me some feedback on that. He did look at the unemployment rate in Scott County, which is about two and a half percent. So he said unemployment in Scott County is not a big concern. So therefore, recruiting industrial opportunities would not be a priority as far as he could recommend. He said tax revenue opportunities are in real estate and housing development. And I think we've been hearing that. But he felt like that's what Scott County needed to focus on. That's the only thing I had covering those areas. But I will be doing the EDA update each month.
Anything for anyone else?
I'd like to mention one thing. David Carter is with us today. And all of you probably know David is a coach, softball coach at Rocko High School. And we need to recognize those girls, David. They won't be back to school until our next meeting, I think, is, is August the seventh. The September meeting would be great if we can get them over here.
Yeah, probably the biggest thing there is five of them will not be available because they'll be in college.
Right.
So.
Well, I, I don't, August seventh, I don't think will be good either because vacations and they won't be back to school, girls who ever were on August seventh. So talk to your coach, talk, talk to Nick about it and, and to Mr. Burry and see what they think about coming over maybe in, in September so we can recognize them. I should know, but I don't. Are there any more state championship champions that gets in, uh, Gate City or Twin Springs?
We had one in Twin Springs.
What, who, what is it?
It was Cotton one.
Cotton one.
Kewell one.
Three hundred, three hundred.
That's right. We'll, we'll get in touch with, with them too.
Didn't the base girl?
She couldn't say.
She couldn't, uh, run it.
Okay. We'll get in touch with them too, but talk with them and see what they think that they could do for us to get those girls over here. We appreciate you.
I know the, uh, I know the school board is going to recognize them at their, uh, meeting in August.
In August.
Yeah. I know that's on the agenda for them to recognize their softball and-
Possibly here. We could do it in August, but I was just, I was thinking of vacations and everything. Whatever you can work out, we, we'll work with you, okay?
Okay.
All right. We do need to go into, uh, executive session to discuss real estate in Gate City. We need a motion to do.
Who made it?
Mr. Cheater made the motion. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will go into executive session. Yes. Take a break?